My final e-mail to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Exciting, it's four day week, so let's get ready for that. Freshmen, the following students owe freshman dues in money for unsealed tickets, AMG 20, Gibson 40, Aiden 40, Jayden 30, Adrian 40. Lunch change for Tuesday, October 15th, it's going to be walking tacos, Greek fried brie, and fruitcake. Students will have a quick call meeting at the beginning of the study hall today in the art room. And CCA members, your check and T-shirts are in, stop by and see if you can pick up the T-shirts. At the fair meeting in the ad shop at 6:00 P. M. tonight, everyone who's interested in navigating L E E. Fire, all of Miss Beagle's fire clubs need to bring your live shops today. And today is lunch in Baskett's Hall, they found out this.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go ahead and call the meeting order. We just did the pledge.
Does that count?
That does.
Need a motion to declare an open meeting. Second to declare an open meeting, on your first, aye?
Aye.
Close, no, motion carries. There's a notification of the Open Meetings Act, it's listed in the back of the room. Will call, chance, yep? Self, yes?
Yes.
Wyatt's excused, Melissa, I'm not sure yet. Assuming she's coming. Number six, we will approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as. I'll second.
We can second to approve the agenda, in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Close, no, motion carries. We'll move on to the consent agenda, starting with the minutes, last month's meeting. Budget meeting minutes are in there as well. Minutes are okay, but we want the financials. Looks like we got a new page there.
Yes, that's a page dot, where I'll spend insert every month, it shows you where we're at percentage wise with expenditures. We're still kind of playing with them a little bit. No, yes?
Yeah, no, I, I think, you know, so it'll grow every month, I'll, I'll insert the next month and just to kind of keep you, you know, aware of each of our budgeted funds and, you know, what our expenses are. Year to date, so year to date balances like you have with your general fund, right? Year to date percentage spent, so might as well just manage that or share that for, for all funds. So Kelly and I kind of talked about it for the past couple of months and so whatever you, this is just a start, can, I can adjust it however you want, but but we thought we'd, you know, go ahead and, and share those, just more details about budget.
Yeah, well, it's all right, just see where you're at on each one.
In the building fund, we had a, a movement of cash from the playground equipment, right?
That's correct.
So Cal, that, so that one is a little askew.
But by breaking them down like this, it's going to be that way, because you're itemizing it more than just a general overall, which is a stable balance.
Yeah, because it's one bigger pot compared to, yeah.
That was the auditor's suggestion, right?
Yeah.
Over from general entry building.
Yeah, so we, we always make a few adjustments when we tell, when our audit comes.
We still have more to make, they haven't, I haven't gotten any final stuff from them, we're still waiting for our spec final, and we've been working on that because the auditors like to see that. Get upload to the state before they give me my final work to do, so I expect to hear from them in the next couple of weeks, so. They're doing other schools right now too, so they're pretty busy.
So lunch fund is going to be all right, it's even taking a whole lot.
Um, I'm, I'm keeping a close eye on that, I'm doing some analysis versus last year, I started a spreadsheet, I'm in the same boat you are. Um, so yes, I'm, I'm keeping a close eye on that because we are getting paid, we're charging Zion full price for breakfast and lunch, and then they're turning in the money to the state to be reimbursed, so they're paying full price, not reduced or free. And we still get, and that's, but yes, I, because we no longer have those rates like we did during COVID, it's and we have, we do budgeted, I think we budgeted either forty or fifty to transfer over, but we usually generally don't transfer that until like March. So yes, I am keeping a very close eye on that.
Do we have a, a count on that, on how many kids are eating?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
I don't know that we've seen anything dramatically different that would change a whole lot with regard to budget for revenues.
I would say that.
I think it's pretty steady, but I, I mean, I know our expenses have, expenses have gone up for sure.
Our expenses have gone up, yes, yes.
But we just, yeah, we don't have the, the more disposable cash. I see our, our friends in the school district out west used school nutrition money to buy video boards for their gym. Got a little trouble with the auditor for that, but they, they justified it in a way to, that, that they, they shared nutritional information on it in the mornings when the kids are in the gym. Not unlike our kids that are in the gym every morning, if we were to turn those video boards on and share nutritional information, we could have justified paying it forward with, with federal funds during COVID. So they got in a little trouble with that, but they were, every nutritional budget was, was flush with cash for a few years.
Any questions, there we go on to the claims.
You'll likely not see a claims number under fifty thousand next month, so there won't be a pattern here. We'll have a, a larger ESU bill for, for probably about that amount alone for ESU next month.
It'll be double.
So the insurance for Bush and Rome, that W slash C insurance slash.
Yeah, that was it, okay, so I do a workers comp, um, ah, audit for them, I pull my numbers from payroll and everything like that, and then they take that, and from that they up to our workers comp um, dollar amounts, it was that, and then we paid a little bit additional, I believe, for the building, um, the, the new structure we have down there, so. Yeah, that's an audit that I perform every year for them, they send me the work and I have to send it back, and then they, from that they determine what our workers comp premium should be.
Is there a reason why the bus repairs was paid out petty cash?
Because they needed a check immediately to release the bus to us, okay, and then you, do you move, do we just keep it out of petty cash, right?
Yeah, I reimburse it, but I charge it to the correct account, so when I'm reimbursing petty cash, I charge the, the transportation account, but yeah, that's they, that's the only company I think we've ever worked with that they have to be paid when they take up the bus, so.
Was that the turbo repairs?
No, it's still down there for.
That won't be that cheap. If it is, I'd take it with semi, sir.
This was for the wheel axle, uh, this summer, we were, it was leaking
Leaking some oil.
Some, something, I mean, there's a stain on the north side.
Okay, well, I just wanted to make sense.
I'm not sure how we'll do this one, because this one will be a little more pricier, and we, we might not have enough cash in petty cash, so we'll, we'll deal with it when I hear from them, hopefully, you know, this week sometime.
Could we set up an account?
I, I don't know.
And put some money in?
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good question, Mike, and, and we, we did find out from the auditor's that we can uh, we can cut checks in the middle of the week out of general fund as opposed to kind of once a month, so
It just needs.
If it comes to it, we just need somebody to come in and give us a signature.
Right, and it would just be approved at the following meeting, so. I didn't know if that was like a board policy, you guys only pay down the general fund once, because it's the way I've always done it since I've been here, but she said that unless it's a policy, I can cut checks during the month, but you would still have to approve them, approve them at the next meeting, so.
Is there a dollar amount there, like, is there still a five thousand dollar limit on something like that?
Probably for, yeah, that's your policy, so.
That's, that's.
See where, where it comes out, yeah.
As soon as I hear from them, I'll let you know what we're looking at, and they, they don't know that it's automatically that, but that was kind of first guess based on the symptoms, I guess. A little, a little frustrating.
You have to open a sports booster's account.
Gift that keeps on giving.
Is there any other question, please? If not, we'll, need a motion to accept consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as stated.
Seconded.
You can second to accept the consent agenda, in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Close, no, motion carries. Number eight, celebration of excellence.
Little Kim, are you with us? Okay, very good, we are at that point in our agenda, and I'm going to have Nurse Beth kind of introduce uh, a little bit about, about our presentation today. Okay, Nurse Beth?
Okay.
What have you been working on?
We have been working for the, the last probably year and a half or so on becoming a heart safe school through Project Adam, uh, and that's through, um, State of Nebraska Children's Hospital. So there's designation, um, requirements that we've meant to become designated as a heart safe school. Kim Costinello will be giving a short PowerPoint, she is the lead director of the Project Adam. And we've met all the requirements, and she's ready to explain more of what we've done and who's helped, and there's been a lot of cooperation amongst staff and the whole community that we want to recognize today. So should we let her just go ahead?
Yeah, yeah, Kim, we're, we're ready for you, I have the PowerPoint queued up.
That will, okay, well, I'm getting more and starting, we haven't seen you a while, so, um, as I go through, just kind of follow me, and if I get too far ahead, stop me, okay?
All right.
Okay, hi everybody, thanks for having me today, um, we go to slide two, and I have to cook on that. Um, the first thing I want to do is to thank the growing important people, um, playing the role of a school, for dedication, thank you so much, but no school coming to this without you, and we appreciate that so much. Um, Dr. Al, this is my question.
And it's thanks for the support of the goal process, and we appreciate him as well, and then of course Beth Ramel, um, she has, um, done, he is instrumental in the youth program coming into the district, and we thank her um, immensely. Uh, as I said, my name is Kim Caspolana, and I am the coordinator for Project Adam, um, at the Children's Nebraska. Um, we are an affiliate of Project Adam, we are one of forty four sites in thirty three states. Um, now, so it's grown, I'm going to tell you a little bit about how it started. Um, I am also a school administrator by trade, I was a school administrator for thirty three years, and I retired from that, um, two and a half years ago, and promoted Project Adam. And we are very proud of it, we, um, well, we started two and a half years ago, we were just one school, um, had, had the designation, and now we have over a hundred and ten school. You guys, I believe it's a hun- a hundred fifteen, a hundred sixteen, so I'll find out when, you know, that, um, we'll cruise it right along. Um, Dr. Al, someone saying he couldn't be with us today on the Zoom, um, because he's traveling to North Oak to talk about Project Adam. Um, he is going to give a walk, a presentation, and at the end of the flight, so. I can go on to slide three. Some other special things that I'd like to do, um, Jim Hodgson, elementary control for R E coordination, um, Doug has talked so highly about all of the work I've worked on, thank you. Um, the cardiac emergency response team, that's the hard work, extra training required, and they did it all, um, a great, good guy. Um, Plainview Administration, thank you for letting us train all your staff, that is, um, not always common, um, we encourage it, and we love it when schools actually do it, and so thank you for doing that. Um, the current seventh and current eighth grade, um, thank you so much for donating, um, your fund to help with the cost of this program. Um, City of Plainview, the senior grant fund also assisted, um, with getting new AEDs, I believe, and Plainview Ball Bachelors Organization as well, and the Plainview Community Medical Personnel, any enough for participating and, and helping with, um, Project Adam and Plainview. Slide four, we'll tell you a little bit about Adam Romo, Adam was a seventeen year old boy, he was playing basketball in his gym and drafted of Wisconsin. He collapsed in front of his parents and all of the community, um, they, despite having EMS right across the street, and everything that they um, needed to do to try to revive him, um, he did not survive, and the reason he didn't survive was because AEDs were not commonplace back in nineteen ninety nine. Um, AEDs were something that medical professionals had, um, but they didn't really exist in schools, and if they did, um, people didn't know how to use them. And so his parents gathered together with the community and started a program called, um, Project Adam, which stands for Automated Disturbulator, and Adam's number. Now, it's super important, as slide five shows, because of the sudden cardiac arrest. A sudden cardiac arrest is not a heart attack, um, though you apply CPR to both, and also the central perhaps CPR. Um, cardiac arrest is a rhythmic problem and not a circulational problem, a circulational problem, um, is when you have a blockage or something like that, and that's a cause of a heart attack. But it is impossible for the heart back into, um, normal rhythm without, um, the fibrillation, and so that's why that's so important. Um, what yours school did with slide seven, you'll see, if you just hit the button and you see how the, um, little, little game goes down, um, for every single minute that passes without CPR or distillation, you lose ten percent of a chance of survival. So within eighty to twelve minutes, there's very little chance that somebody would survive. Eighty minutes is about the average time a person waits for EMS to arrive, so that's why it's so important to have an AED present, and someone who can start the CPR process, um, to help save lives in these areas. The importance of being heart safe, Plainview has gone through the process, they have, one, ensured that AEDs are accessible and functional, they have CPR and AED trained staff, they have developed a early response team and a cardiac emergency response plan, which they then conduct drills to practice and ensure that the teams are ready to react quickly and efficiently. They have joined over a hundred and ten sites and protecting over sixty thousand children, um, in the back of the school in case of a sudden cardiac arrest. So very proud of them, lots of hard work, um, and then now Dr. Shortson has a little presentation, if you could click on slide eight, and so, yeah, that would be great. And if you can, I have a running team that I could pull up to.
Okay, Mike, need you to do that, it's, uh,
Okay.
Not playing for me, so.
Oh, okay, can you do, to know, sharing for yourself, I don't have sharing.
Uh huh, where would sharing be?
Uh, down at the bottom, I, I do, um, quite different, and then you can give me, like, the, the hope.
Are you in Zoomed after all? On Zoom, yeah, there you go.
Yeah, at the very bottom, it's a, it's a, you click on it, yeah.
Okay, did that work?
Oh, hold on a second, I'm working right now. Oh, no, it did not.
Hey, hang on, I got a, I got a guy.
You got a guy, okay.
Go back down there.
It's certain, it's become a, oh, you might not have, okay, yeah, it's not given, even online, it's not going to maybe, I mean, the app, but one, two, one, so.
Sure.
It won't show the video from yours at my plane?
Yeah, I'm, I'm clicking on that, and it doesn't. Now, see if.
If not, if not, we can skip that.
Oh, hang on, well, now I got, I got.
I was on the corner.
Well, that has, it has a share over here now. I'll, I'll push it out later, Kim.
Okay, that'd be great, that's what the people can use, you know, when you have to.
Yes. Sorry.
Most of the way, yeah, so it's your voice, no worries at all, it's, it's technology, sometimes it goes away. Um, no worries, good. Um, Dr. Small, who just, um, presented a little bit about what Project Adam is, why it's important, and then he, at the very end, he said congratulations to all of you, um, so if we go to the next plane, um, if Doug wants to roll out the banner. Congratulations, Plainview Public School has designated a place to. They have done some hard work, Doug, I'm so proud of you, and it's really, thank you.
The banner has been unfurled, and we'll. Almost a standing ovation here in the room, Kim. Yes, and, and certainly appreciate your support, uh, Kim, and, and, and Nurse Beth, of course, has taken the lead here, and, and lots of good folks here, uh, to help make it happen, but, but thank you uh, for, uh, for your support as we work through this for many, many months.
Absolutely, she really worked hard, and you guys started from absolutely point zero, um, not all of our schools have to do that, and so that requires so much extra work, coming up with the AEDs and making sure that you have all the right equipment, and all of that, it's just, it's a little bit more of a challenge, and she did a fantastic job, so.
Yeah.
Many kudos, and thank you to all of you for your support for her, it's very much appreciated, and if you guys send a picture of your, of your banner below down, okay?
We will do that.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Kim, have a great week.
You too, bye bye.
Okay, so can we get a picture with you guys in this, right, please?
I just stand back. How about you guys?
You want one from that?
Yeah.
Okay, that's.
Leave that up, leave it behind.
Oh, okay.
And I will say, I'll, I'll, I'll just, for one thing, she said we started a deal, but honestly, the administration and the staff here always were very good about, we, we have more AEDs now than not had AEDs, and we've and they've always allowed me to train all the staff every year for many, many years, so we've, we can start from zero. Yeah, but so, it's, it's a group effort for sure. And it's going to come up, we're going to hang down.
Oh, we might put it as a gym, uh, which is where we have a captured crowd quite often, but.
Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you. You guys.
She's got to hang that banner and go from the rafters.
Yeah, we'll get you a ladder.
That'll take a week if I.
Yeah, thanks, that's, that's great we have that available, you know, in case something, God forbid, would happen to kids here.
Yeah, and a big one is, we, you know, we, we have them down, down on the athletic fields, you know, because we're, we're like, okay, here's where there's a lot of exertion and activity and so on, we've got one that travels with the coaches.
We have, yeah, we have two in this building, one in the old and one down here by the gym, one in the elementary, and then the one that's down at the football field now, which is great, and then we have three actually that can travel. Portable, very small ones, and one goes out to recess every day, one of the portable ones out of the elementary, and then there's two for checkout that go with our sports team or activities people, it's really, really good, it's nice, so, thank you. You're welcome.
All right, we'll move on to number nine, public comment, see anybody here who wants to speak. Move on then to number ten, facilities report.
Yeah, I did, uh, just wanted you to be aware, I did bring our entire staff up to date, uh, on, on, you know, where we are with this facility audit, I just wanted to make sure that our staff is fully aware uh, right from the get go on, on what's happening, why it's happening, conversations that are happening, so as we start to accelerate the conversation throughout our community, and they are maybe approached uh, by somebody, they can speak to, um, just essentially this facility audit and, and why it began, and, and, uh, the, the process, that is ongoing, I wanted to, uh, you know, they, they were here for their first initial uh, gathering of data, uh, they are, they being, uh, Carlson West Pavandra, will be back on the eighteenth, uh, to do kind of a follow up of more details, and then they're going to set up interviews, they're going to come and spend a day or two, whatever it takes to interview board, administration, staff, essentially on, tell us about your facilities, tell us about what you're dealing with, tell us about what you would reasonably like to see, um, uh, the board consider asking our stakeholders for, so, and you're, you'll, you're aware of a lot of that already, uh, but until we ask, you know, our, our sixty some staff members, and particularly our thirty three teachers uh, who are living and working in these facilities every day, um, are, are they adequate, and adequate really shouldn't even be our goal, right? But, uh, so they're, they're kind of generating a list, uh, and just adding their desires, wishes, thoughts about, uh, facilities, and any, maybe any inadequacies, inadequacies that, that we might have, so uh, that's where, that column, Jen, do you have anything to add, uh, or in particular even with regard to city conversation?
Uh, we had a meeting with the city about the, um, community building, and so they have a group put together for what they're going to do facility wise there, to make sure that we don't have overlapping things, and we're putting two different, two of the same things in both places, so they're meeting with architects as well, that was one of the meetings we had, so uh, we're kind of in the same stage at, at both, with both groups right now, so.
I did share with, with Mr. Tar as well, the, the architects that are conducting our facility audit, just so, uh, because they are kind of maybe talking with somebody else, just not that we're going to necessarily align to have the same architect, it could be some benefit with regard to that, but, uh, not automatic, but so we're just trying to make sure we have those lines of communication open, I don't have any and, any specific updates with regard to the paving in Lincoln Street, I know the engineering has, has kind of begun, I don't know if we've had the, the big day or two where they'll come and really start to you know, drill down on, on, uh, what, what that's going to require, so I'll just be patient and wait, um, for that piece of information, there, there's nothing scheduled for next summer, I know we were maybe, at this point I know that we were maybe hoping, okay, this is going to be a spring summer project, you know, not, not automatically, not necessarily, again, just waiting for, um, the city, uh, and their, to to get to that point where we can start to look at a calendar and, and to budget, uh, for that, so, um, again, it'll be next spring before, uh, CWP is probably ready to make their presentation to you and our community. And that'll, that'll really probably accelerate, uh, conversation in details about what we may need to do. Um, I did share with you the, a report that I got back from, uh, uh, our, our friends that did the assessment of the nineteen twenty, uh, building, did bring another engineer, they were only here for about an hour. They were only here for about an hour, but they peeked in and they said, yeah, it looks exactly like the pictures in the report that we did eight years ago. Although they did look at the, the southwest, southeast corner, they didn't break through that ceiling though and the floor below and look at it. They just essentially made an assumption they had, that the same process is kind of happening over there, but, um, they, but, and again, you saw the report. I did talk to Bill Beckenhauer from Norfolk, uh, who provided the thirteen thousand dollar bid to fix just the one corner eight years ago. He was going to kind of freshen that up, does, obviously doesn't have it for us today, uh, but he said, early estimate would be triple.
For what?
To do, to do both corners, to do both corners, uh, so, you know, we'd be looking at easily probably a thirty to forty thousand dollar guesstimate, just to shore it up, maybe for temporary, temporarily, but, or permanently, I guess.
The thing is, how many more of those Joyce are close to doing the same thing that we haven't looked at on different levels? You know, if, if we fix those two, in the next ten years, how many more are going to do the same thing?
Yeah, potentially, it'll take some pressure off those though that are in the middle, uh, because they're, they're now being a little bit overtaxed. So, again, you, you saw the report, I did put a hard copy in your folder, if they were getting thick enough, but, uh, so that'll be part of the report from Carlson West Pavandra, uh, would be the fatigue of that, of that building.
I missed the date on there, I thought that was the, I thought that was their estimate now.
I thought so, you replied, I was, I was thinking.
It was already back then, it's a little thirteen.
Yeah, I, I misinformed you, if I said, I think it was thirty, I, I, you know, obviously, I want to say I had a three in my head and didn't think thirteen thousand sounded like a lot for anything. So, I, so if I said thirty, I'm, I'm accurate now, maybe, I was inaccurate eight years ago.
Well, we don't, one thing is we don't have, you know, it's not sagging somewhere else, you know, it's not quite as bad.
Right, so it hasn't probably fixed.
But you hate to spend that kind of money in that, two years down the road, another corner starts sagging, another one starts sagging. Yeah, then what do you do, you throw your money away or you keep throwing your money away?
Get paid smarter.
Anything else there on that?
No.
All right, we'll move on to board policy number eleven, five oh eight oh one and five oh eight oh two.
Question, I could maybe have Nurse Beth stick around for this, five oh eight oh one is student health and immunization checkups, these are all legally binding policies. So, quite honestly, uh, and I know you're familiar with them, uh, to a certain degree, if you've had kids that kind of come from school. So there's certain requirements, obviously, that we expect kids to have, we have very few, I don't know, Jen would know maybe better than I, very few that apply for exemptions to immunizations. It's a little more of a, there's a little more chatter about it now, post-COVID, about immunizations, but for the most part, our people are pretty doggone accommodating, pretty reasonable. So if any of this changes, and there's several regulations that go with it, uh, you know, the, the date on one is twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, on, uh, five oh eight oh one E four. I'm not a hundred percent sure if I'm supposed to have a newer one than that, so I will check on that, but usually they push them out as things get up. And then five oh eight oh two, administration of medications to students, so, just like any school, you know, kids aren't supposed to keep medications in their locker. And we really don't think they do, and that would apply more to this building, do they have ibuprofen in their locker? They do, do we do locker searches for it? We don't. Prescription medication, obviously, would be a whole different thing, and if we were ever aware of that, you know, we would address that and get with that, so. And again, Nurse Beth does a tremendous job of managing, helping to manage our medications in both buildings and students that take meds throughout the day, which is, which is a small number, but, relevant policies under us, no language changes.
Is the actual policy state mandated too, or just the forms?
Both. Yeah, the forms are more informative, yes. So they can look a little different from school to school and from Policy Subscription Service to Policy Subscription Service, but the language, the requirements, so there's really a few lines that are statutory and would be the same in every school.
Number twelve, board development, page ninety-four through ninety-six, that was filling board vacancies.
Which we've done a couple times, just to process the follow, which mostly everything is about process. It's not so much about, maybe a common decision, but it's about, did you arrive at it in a legally binding way?
Thank goodness we've never, had your experience where a board member has been absent for three meetings on the road, where you have to make a call on them. It's always something else comes up they have to quit.
Yeah, it only takes two, two unexcused.
After missing two, you know.
And then I think you, you have some latitude on how you want to deal with that.
Depends on what he's.
It's essentially, somebody goes MIA, right?
Yeah. If you're sick or, you know, something like that, that's there.
Yeah, because this is an art policy, this is just N A S B.
Right.
Guidelines, so. Yeah, you were on last time it happened, right?
It was last time when Jen came back to teach for her, so she had to go off. It's happened a couple times.
Any comments on that? Okay, move on to action items, then, thirteen, discuss and take possible actions, second reading policy, five oh two oh three, answer and submissions.
I'll make a motion to approve on second reading revisions to policy five oh two five oh three, answer and submissions.
On second?
Second, then you accept the policy five oh eight, or five oh two oh three, answer and submissions. Chance?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Self guess?
Yep.
Motion carried. Move on. Number fourteen, discuss take possible actions, clerical revisions, policy five oh two two four, title nine.
This was pushed out from our, from N A S B, uh, and I did provide redline copies for you as well in your, in your folder, your folders are thick because of this policy. Title nine is a massive federal regulation, as you know, applies minimally, but it takes up plenty of space in your binder. And it, 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 it changes based on, uh, administrative enforcement. So if, after we have the election in November, we're going to get a new title nine policy. But, and, and it's mostly, as I mentioned, dramatical and clerical changes, nothing with regard to substance. But I didn't want to give you a whole mass of new title nine policy and just tell you, it, trust me, there just was a lot of changes. So I made a copy of the, the redline changes in there just for your information. And you can see that really, it's just changing this word for that word and that word for this word, so. Yep, just, just need to approve a new one and we'll do it again in a few months.
I'll make a motion to approve revisions to policy five oh four two four, title nine, non-discretion.
I'll second that.
Moving second, then to approve revisions to five oh four two four, Deb? Self guess? Chance?
Yes.
Motion carried before. All right, move on to reports, starting with the activities director report.
Uh, starting postseason, so we just hosted the first conference event, uh, for the new conference, we hosted Gnat Cross Country last week. We got some things we got to change and do better if we're going to host again here in another eight years, seven years, whatever it could be. But overall, uh, people liked the courses and the conferences, they've been good about giving feedback about things we can change and help make it better. Everybody had a good experience, I think, overall, so it was well, or good, a good event. Volleyball, we see on Wednesday, and then they play next week, football playoffs start next week, we have our first junior high vocal clinic, that is on Tuesday, I believe, up next week, or Thursday, whatever the other.
What's the first round of football playoffs?
First round of football playoffs is Thursday.
It's next Thursday?
Yes.
We got Thursday, home game this week.
Yes.
And then likely, hopefully, you'll find out over the weekend, on the road, you think?
Right now, we're a ninth seed, but I was.
I hope I got a bus for you.
But that can all change, so we'll see how it goes. And then we have our high school vocal clinic, and then bowling down there, um, I've talked with thirteen-twenty, um, they said we cannot host any events there, and they would only let us practice two nights a week and only be able to utilize two lanes, so, um, obviously, that's not going to work out, talking with Leo, so. I got all the contact information for Osmond, I was going to get ahold of them, and then once I get that information back, I'll share that with you guys on what that looks like, so. That's where we're at with bowling right now.
Yeah, my kids, they're looking at wanting to bowl.
With full girls team, I think we have five or six for that one, and then right now, boys, we have three, right, Herb?
Three.
So we got to recruit two more to have full team.
Osmond doesn't have a team, does he?
No, they do have, and we're too late for the co-op, co-op's got to be turned in by September, uh, but last time I talked to them about that, they, uh, what do you call it?
They're unified.
They do unified bowling, and they didn't have any interest in, in, uh, taking on bowling as a high school sport, so. But I will refresh that conversation for the future, depending on how things go here in the next month, so. That's where we're at.
Yeah, really like Osmond to join us, even if they had only one, two, or three, I mean, we, we'd certainly, you know, with regard to the expenses, you know, I think we'd be reasonable with expenses if they only had a couple, but if, if we're going to potentially, that would be your decision, if we're going to ship our kids to Osmond every day to practice, it'd be nice if they'd come down, if they had, just, if you have that opportunity, maybe all of a sudden, so one or two kids interested, they might have to, I don't know, but, but Kyle's working with our friends in Osmond to see if we can get that relationship going, maybe.
The boys can bowl as individuals, right?
You don't have to have a full team to do it, it's just, when it comes to the team scoring, you're not going to.
If you can't go to state as a team, you only go as an individual.
Yep. Setting a spell.
Okay, we'll go on to the principals report then.
Uh, tonight's a big night for us in the elementary, we have our family reading night, uh, it's been a huge success in the past, so we're looking forward to the same thing. Uh, Michael Foods is host, are sponsoring our food, so we're doing fried chicken with other things with it. Back here on the tables, you can see white packages, those are our books, so this is first grade alone, right there, each class has their own space, but we have almost twelve hundred books to give away tonight. Every kid in the elementary, whether they come or not, will get at least four books, so that's probably the thing that we pride ourselves on the most, is we're just so thankful for our, the generosity of Michael Foods and all the other donors that we've had, because Michael also contributed some money to make sure every kid got a book. So the amount of time and money that they're putting into this night for our students at Plankville Elementary School is phenomenal. But Midwest Bank is coming too, on behalf of J P, or Junior Pirate Branch, and then Christie and Andrew are coming, uh, to do some stuff as the local law enforcement to participate and join with our.
So the kids all get the same books, or they go through a pick and choose?
Nope, it's, there's a library of books that they have for each grade level, and then it just, it's determined based on how much money each student basically got for donations to determine which books, like, those who maybe didn't have any sponsorship besides Michael Foods will all get the same four books, and then they just keep working their way through the library, depending on what kind of donations they got when we did the book blast. But, and, and we have some kids who maybe are not at reading level or who are at grade level reading, and so Mrs. Yoke has worked with us to pre-determine which books would be appropriate for every student.
Well, thanks for doing all the work, your staff.
Yes, the.
It's a big job.
They will definitely be the iron horses behind tonight as well, because they're the ones, in, in addition to National Honor Society students, they're coming to help us. But it's a team effort for sure.
Well, thank you.
And I also just included a couple things that have been happening and some numbers for you guys, so you're aware of how parent-teacher conferences went and some other things that happened last night.
I think you had a good turnout on the other end.
We did, and I think our teachers really liked it where, instead of us scheduling for parents, because we don't always know their schedules, parents scheduled convenient for themselves, and, yeah, we did have a great turnout.
Did you have a pull to elementary and high school, they could schedule their, their own, or was that just in the?
We just did it in the elementary.
High school is just old. Is that typical for the high school to be down there?
Last year, we were lower seventies, so we were down about ten percent.
That probably means that the kids are doing fine, right? I don't go talk to my kids and teachers, everything's going good.
It's, it's, it's not atypical at all, we're high school, we're significantly lower than our, actually, but, just the way it is, it'll even be lower in spring, but. If, if we need to have conversations with parents, we reach out.
Okay, well, thank you guys. President's report, um, we've got the evaluation that is in your packet, and everybody's going to pull that out this month and get back together, close session next month, compile our responses, and we'll turn something to Dr. Earl after that, so. It's the same form we've used in the past, so answer the best we can. There's some areas, it's always hard to know exactly how to answer, but it seems to, it worked all right.
Average is up.
And then, I forget, last month I had some, I had a ballot in my packet for a legislation committee, I think, I think it's the State Board of Education.
Uh, it's for.
Legislation committee?
Yeah, just, it's a committee membership.
Committee membership. Versus a Jim Vlock from Lyons Decatur and an Eric Lee from Arapahoe-Polebrook, um, like, was included, resumes, um, I licked them over, I guess I would just, we have to vote, so I would just probably put the local guy, Lyons Decatur, that's all right, you guys. To let you know, we'll be sending that in. That's all I got for president, so. Fund its super tense report.
Okay, uh, yeah, your, your, your file is a little thicker today, so just, you had the information about heart, safe in there, the first couple of pages, and, um, the title nine information or the new policies, uh, were in there that will go in your binder. Then a lot of it, you can just keep in there, and then, of course, I will shred, uh, your safety audit was in there, so we, we have annual safety audit required by the Department of Education, so, Gail and I kind of managed that, but based on the information that we get back, uh, from Craig Frericks, I visit with Kyle and Jen, you know, if there's anything significant, so. Every year, we tweak something, except, you, you probably noticed the big red numbers on the doors inside and out, that was from a year ago, where he says, hey, those need to be bigger. And, well, okay, because you have to be able to see it from the street, I mean, that, that would be something invisible, but you would maybe recognize, okay, something's happened here, but he looks, you know, through the whole facilities. he looks, you know, through the whole facilities, makes some recommendations, and then expects to see them, you know, the next year, so just wanted you to see, um, the report that, that he presented to us. There's, uh, I should receive the new health rates before next month's meeting, so that could adjust our teacher base for next year, that was part of your negotiated agreement, so anything under four percent, base stays the same. If rates go up four point one to six, the base will come down two hundred dollars for twenty-five, twenty-six. If rates go up six point one or more, the base will come down four hundred dollars, it's per negotiated agreement, well, uh, so within the next week or two, I'll have that, as soon as that comes to me, I'll push it out to you. Don't anticipate a spike in that, it's been pretty reasonable, actually, the past several years, one thing in our society that just hasn't, you know, spiked a little bit, so. That, that will help with budget quite a bit over the course of the next couple of years. Yeah, you may have been notified by NESB, there's a new board member workshop December second, so based on the election next month, um, we're, we'll have a new board member, we're too likely, and so there's a new board member workshop December second, so I think that'd be good for, uh, to make sure those folks are notified, maybe even in advance of the election, hey, good luck, and if you are duly elected and you're a new board member, put December second on your calendar. Uh, we'll go to Norfolk, um, to have a little board development. I don't have anything new for, necessarily, for paying student teachers. I, I, I guess I could, if you want, I could do some research and put together a formal proposal for you to consider. I guess I'll, I'll just move it at, at your direction on that. Just, we, we don't get a whole lot of student teacher requests, I don't think it's necessarily because we don't pay student teachers, but, it's become a little more, uh, top of mind for us, since we weren't able to fill the position, or even get an application. But Wayne State has told us they have many more student teachers in industrial tech coming out in the spring than they had last spring. Would certainly like to get one of those, but.
That, that would be graduated, ready for a job, you're not talking about student teacher, you're talking about somebody that's graduated, ready.
I'm talking about a student teacher, somebody still, yes, so, yeah, they'll graduate in May, they'll student teach in the spring, and they're making those places now, Kyle and Jan go to a teacher fair here coming up. Next week? Next week, they go to Wayne State, where they go do some heavy recruiting.
Yeah.
So, they'll have a few things that they'll be looking for specifically at Wayne Industrial Tech, will be.
So, have they already chose their school for student teaching next spring?
I, I, that, that I don't know for sure, Deb, I would guess that most of them have it narrowed down.
Yeah, right, for this year.
If the, if the process is similar to what it's been for decades, you know, they put a, maybe a top three on their request, you, you used to, you were prohibited from student teaching yet to school you graduated from, I think they dispensed with that. Um, because the local school districts were like, hey, wait a minute, we've been, we've been grooming this kid for years, you know, we don't want him to go student teach somewhere else, because we're, we want him to come here, and we've got a slot for him, because you don't always have a slot for him, we would for industrial tech. So, if we can lure a student teacher here, I mean, the whole goal would be if they're good, and we would help to make them good, and, and then better, but.
Are the schools in northeast Nebraska, are they paying those to be teaching? Are there other?
Uh, that's the research I have to, I mean, I know Norfolk is, I, I don't know how many of the Class C and Class D schools are. So, I, I'll have something for you next month, okay, I'll do a little research, I've actually got a meeting today with some nurses' schools, just to find out what the Randolphs and the Pearces and the Wassos and Blomfield's and Atkins' are doing for student teachers, if they're paid.
So, you guys, superintendents have a website or something that you're all on, that you just ask a set of questions and then give feedback?
Quite, 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 yeah, and occasionally, somebody will throw together a spreadsheet, and they'll say, hey, throw some information on here, but more often than not, it's just a blast out to some region, hey, with a question about, about something, same with principals. So, there's a, there's a pretty good network that goes on to gather, either gather data, or just bounce something off of, you know, a group, hey, we've got circumstance, what, what, have you guys experienced this before, what have you done, or, I mean, what do you think, what do you, how do you feel?
We do have.
And teachers do.
Yeah, we do have four Wayne State students who are doing practicum hours with us, and then we have three other people coming in just to get some hours, or like, for example, Christina Rickert is doing her student teaching with Rhonda right now, so. In the next month and a half, we'll have six to seven different students in our building doing some observation hours, so the amount of, um, Wayne State has reached out to us a lot for that purpose, so I think just getting that initiated will help put our name out there in our school for even student teaching opportunities, more than we've had in the past.
It's probably hard to get a student teacher to come in if you don't have a teacher teaching a class, like, or woodworking, when you have any classes, how do you get a student teacher?
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good point, Mike, and of course, you know, ideally, and generally, they're, they're paired up with that regular, uh, general classroom teacher. Kyle's done a good job with Mr. Peter to have Mr. Command and Mr. Yoke each teach in one section, so, I mean, they're, they're kind of our leads, as generally Mr. Schmidt would be, so your building principal is gonna be the, somebody that a student teacher would have a strong connection with, they'd be a mentor, formally and formally. But it does, it does complicate things, but if somebody's looking for a job, they may say, hey, I think all I gotta do is go in here and not cut off a finger, and I might have a job. No, I might edit that part out of the recording, but, uh, so we're, 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 we're working on it, and hopeful, and optimistic. Uh, Creighton wants to sell us the half of the wrestling mat we bought about fifteen years ago with him, I'm trying to find out how much, he, he asked for, you know, two thousand dollars, well, I think we paid about eight thousand dollars, or four thousand dollars apiece for that mat, more than a decade ago, maybe closer to twenty years ago, but, I, I told him I would come in and inform you, uh, we do, we would use it, because it's in those smaller strips, so it fits down in the basement between the posts, which is a necessary space that we have to have. So, I did talk to Mr. Boyer, even though we just bought a mat two years ago, three years ago, uh, we would sure use it, because we used them big old heavy res lights for years before we even upgraded to this one that we bought with Creighton, and that's been a good relationship with them, but they're buying a new one, they don't want it. Uh, I, I would ask you to authorize me to go ahead and spend a thousand or fifteen hundred to buy their half, uh, I'll bring it back to you next month, but.
How much is a new one?
Ten thousand.
Ten, and this one is completely generic, the one we bought was more than ten, uh, but that one, we fancied up, this is a completely generic red, uh, uh, no, it's.
Dollmar.
Dollmar, thank you, uh, the one that one kid can essentially carry, right, those are what folks have been using for twenty-plus years now, but. So, it, it will be good, it will be helpful, and if we end up having a, you know, a second space for wrestling in a few years, uh, I mean, they, they last for decades, we use them for decades, so our, our new one, we don't use for anything but, but competition and performance.
And when we host our wrestling events, we'll have to rent a mat because we're short one, because we use both gyms, so.
Yeah, so we need plenty of wrestling mat space, so I, so that, that's good, we're trying to find out what we paid for it and when, so we're looking in archives, I've got Creighton looking in archives, uh, you know, as well, just, okay, I want facts, how much did we pay for it, and when did we buy it? And how much do we think it reasonably depreciated? The old scoreboard, scoreboards that came out of the Pirate Gym and sitting in storage for a couple of years, Randolph is interested in them. Now, we, we, they were only about eight years old, and we paid a whole lot of money for them, but they depreciate like crazy, so they're not worth a whole lot, I don't know if it's good for us to maybe keep one for our tartan, just in case, uh, or whether to let them go. I'm gonna see Mr. Schrump today and see if they're still serious about it, um, but, uh, you know, I, they shouldn't be sitting in the shed down in the bottom, the old red roof shed where they're sitting, but, but there's not a lot to them, mostly wires and light bulbs, but, they're, they're pretty pricey, but, so we may have a, a, a solution for them, but they probably want both and not just one, and then we keep one in this one in the tartan that's been in there for, oh, it came out of the Pirate probably fifteen years ago, or now, maybe, maybe twenty or more. They can work for about ever, until they don't. So, anyway, just a little information on that, uh, still looking for. Yeah, still looking for custodians, starting to advertise on the radio, uh, we're, we're kinda back to where we were, we had somebody hired, she tried that a couple of days, it wasn't for her, so we've got Kelly back in the evenings, uh, at part-time, and everybody's managing. We did shift a little minimal responsibility to our classroom teachers, hey, grab your trash bag, and take it out to the big hallway trash can if you would, and do your pencil sharpener, wipe down your marker boards, that saves, you know, three to four minutes per classroom, times thirty-some classrooms, uh, so that's helpful. Our kids in the weight room got a shop vac in the light, so they're kinda just taking care of the weight room, that saves Gail, you know, a half hour or an hour a week, so they're, they're managing pretty well. Committee on American Civics needs to meet, we have to meet twice per year, so I'll push that out to that group, uh, we'll meet next month before the regular board meeting, uh, I've, I've got Tom, Tom is still here. Tom talked about Zoom phones, a time or two, we did budget for that, uh, but we do have a potential to do a little one-stop shop, uh, from, uh, friends from Kitwell, who will do a, a, a whole clock system throughout, bell system throughout, and P A system throughout, incorporating, uh, Zoom phones for our entire campus, both buildings. Tom, do you wanna talk about that a little bit? I don't know, or is here just maybe any question? But, uh, we may have a formal ask in the next month, because they would be able to do maybe a phase one over Christmas. Uh, we have an archaic clock system, most of our clocks, they're, 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 they're not interconnected, they're a bunch of satellite clocks, which is.
They're not all the same time.
Uh, and, and we do not have campus-wide, and so this is, it is a bit of a safety issue, we do, we do not have a campus-wide notification system, uh, or classroom-to-classroom, uh, P A, uh, or calling, and, you know, Tom talked about, he'll talk about it more, if we bring you the formal proposal, he'll go into a few more details about what folks can do. They, they all have a, like, a school number that could come to their cellphone, so we'd still have our same numbers, the issue is, we would have to, we would have to, our business with Nikon would go away. That's, that's our primary issue, and we would then, we would ask them, so we'd say, sorry, we're taking our business elsewhere, and oh, by the way, would you release our five-eight-two numbers? Because they own them, could be a tough ask, but, um, what, what we want to do with our clock, P A, bell system, notification system, is be on the scope of what our friends.
Um, the, the main advantage with the Zoom phones is essentially every staff member would have a phone number, as opposed to an extension, so, and that's not a number that we would necessarily list or put out, we could, but, um, and that way, coaches, teachers, if they choose to, could give parents, students, athletes, whatever, that number, instead of their personal cellphone number, so that they're getting called on a school number, that is, um, the, the phones, calls are logged, um, i- if something were to happen, there's, it texts, you can text with that number, texts are stored, um, so you can go back and look at that kind of thing, um, and it's, each teacher would have a phone in their classroom that they could call out, they could receive calls, they could call room to room, they could call Tammy, there's a lot of rooms where the push button on the wall doesn't work anymore, so they can't get ahold of Tammy if they need to, they gotta use their personal cellphone. They'd have phone in their room, they, we would put the app on all their computers, so they could receive phone calls on their computers, and if they choose to, they could put the app on their personal cellphone, and, um, we could call their work number, it would go through the app, and they could talk on their personal cellphone as if they were doing their work number. So, that piece right there is something that is specific to the Zoom phones that we could not get through the telephone company, so. Which, which could be handy.
How many dollars do we spend right now with the local phone company, you know?
About six hundred and one.
About six hundred and one.
So, the way that they're, obviously, there's gonna be some upfront charges, because we have to get phones and, and all that kind of stuff, but once that goes away, um, as of right now, you can get, we'd each, we'd get each staff member, it's basically more like a cellphone plan instead of a traditional phone plan. See, it's, it's a monthly license, and then it's unlimited local and long distance in the United States, so there's no long-distance minutes or anything like that, it's just a set rate, and it's fifteen bucks a month, so, for, for one license, so take that times fifty, and, and you've got unlimited long-distance minutes every month, so, so that, that's kinda what it would, would look like monthly going forward after the initial setup phase, would, that's what our expenses would be, would be those licenses, so.
Is our internet still coming through Bling, or Nikon?
We, as long as I've been here, we have never had our internet through the telephone company, which is not our choice, it's just how the internet works in Nebraska, it just, every four years, it goes out to a bid, and anybody can put a bid in, and whoever's lowest bid, you have to take, if you wanna get reimbursement from the state to pay for it, so that's not our choice, that's just the way that it works, so, unfortunately.
Is there any other options to go with in this company, I mean, is there a lot of companies that offer this kind of stuff?
Um, so the reason we chose this, uh, they have, Zoom has worked very closely with, um, it's a group of service units in the, in Nebraska, um, to give us really, really good pricing, like, half, more than half off of what their normal licenses cost. Um, so, it's very affordable to do this, um, and a lot, there are quite a few service units and a lot of districts that are going this route, just because of this pricing and the additional features that you get, um, with, with this license, with the long-distance calling, and being able to be mobile with your work number and that kind of thing. Um, I mean, we could do this through the telephone company and get, uh, phone numbers for everyone and that kind of stuff, but it would, they'd be stuck here at school, they wouldn't be able to take those with them on their computer or on their cellphone, um, you also get, if we go the Zoom route, you also get the full Zoom license that you can do conference calling and all that kind of stuff with it, too.
Are these Zoom phones like a cellphone, or are they?
So, so that's a little misleading, so the Zoom phone part is just the license, they don't give you phones or anything, so you'd have to get, that's where this Kitwell is coming in, we, we would get phones from like Polycom or a different brand that are compatible with this Zoom phone technology that you would put in the classrooms. So, Zoom doesn't actually make any phones, it's just the technology and stuff, and managing the numbers and that kind of thing. So.
See if I have some information next month.
Yeah, we have a. We've got a proposal already from Kitwell, uh, that I, you know, we'll, we'll talk and see if we're kinda ready to pull the trigger and ask you to reconsider it.
Yeah, yeah, this quote he gave us is very vague, it's not itemized or anything, so I wanted to see, see it broken down a little bit more, so.
Every employee would have to carry two phones, basically, they'd have their own plus and a Zoom phone.
Say that again?
Every employee would have to.
No, 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 no.
Oh, it all goes on your person.
The, the phone in their classroom is not portable, it, it would be like a landline type phone, but, but plugged into our internet, not into a phone line, that would just stay in their classroom. The other part that we would install on their computer and/or phone, that's just an app that goes on there, so essentially, if somebody called them, it could ring on three devices. Their phone in their room would ring, their computer could ring if they were logged into it, and their cellphone could ring if they had that app on there.
Like, so, an iPhone call?
Yeah. So the, the phone in the classroom is mostly just for inter-school talking, room to room, Tammy to, to the classrooms, the classrooms back to Tammy, um.
Do they have a speaker in them for like the announcements in the morning?
So they do, um, so in the elementary right now, we do have phones in every classroom. When we first put that in, that was, that's been a long time ago, um, we tried to utilize them as our paging system, it did not work well, cause the speakers are not loud enough. Um, and so that's, this Kitwell also does intercoms, which we're hoping that we can tie, since these phones will all be on the network, we can tie these phones into our existing intercom system, so hopefully a lot of our speakers, or it's still good wherever they are, that we can use those, and then when Tammy makes a call, she can pick it up, dial an extension that will go to all of our speakers, and she'll talk into it, and it'll go over there, and it'll just be one way. So if the classrooms need to talk, call back, they'll have to use their phones, but that can save us a lot of money by reusing those, those speakers and stuff, and they're so much louder than the phones are.
Okay, uh, thank you, uh, Tom.
Yeah.
Um, state conference in November, I've got Tim and Mike, you'll be coming in later on Wednesday, but Deb and Melissa and I will go down uh, for the pre-conference, uh, unless that's changed, you guys let me know, that I bet you're coming down later on Wednesday, and should I do room reservations, uh, enrollment summary is there, I've got a meeting actually today at Wayne State with NERCSA, and vacation and sick balance are listed there for you, that's all I have. Appreciate the flexibility on meeting, uh, this morning.
Yep, okay, thank you.